Let's pray. Dear Father, I thank you for brothers and sisters in Christ, partners in the gospel and friends. I ask you that you would inspire us, breathe into us. On this day, we ask you, dear Lord, that you would impress upon us everything that you do for us individually. You do for us together collectively. And so, dear Lord, there is strength in those numbers. When we come together and we're all, we're all together on this journey together. We are stronger together than we ever are apart. Equip us in this thing that you call the church. Be with us. Pour grace out upon us and build your kingdom here. In your name we pray and begin. Amen. Amen. Oh, you two can sit down now. Oh, you three. Oh, you can't. Dear sister. Lisa's struggling. Lisa needs our prayers. Um, so I want you to open your catechism. Let me just, can I confess something to you? I, uh, Tom pointed this out to me. Um, uh, this catechism that I use is, is the one that's helpful. When we get beyond the sixty parts in Luther's explanation in the new one that we bought and hand it out to you, the pattern of the questions is completely different. The answers, the resources, the thoughts, the journey. It's completely different than the, than the pattern in the older catechisms. Um, and so we're going to, for the sake of the rest of this class, we're going to stay with Luther's, uh, the, the six chief parts and then Luther's meaning of it. Because when you open that catechism, that's in there. Uh, but the explanation section, uh, the wrong side of the church body got a hold of this one. Look, that's on tape too. Praise God. All right. So are you there? Did I waste time enough for you to get there? Third article of the creed and the meaning. Uh, a page in your catechism where the third article of the creed and the meaning is listed? Third article of the creed and the meaning. What? In my catechism, it's 147. 194, 195, and the brand new spanking ones. All right? What is it in the 11942 version? 123. Sorry. God love you. That's great. That's great. And do you have notes written in the margins of your? In German. Praise God. Praise God. So, so I want you to, I want to read through the Luther's meaning of the third article of the creed. Um, and just know we're going to fly through the first paragraph because we've been there and we've ripped that baby up. And now we're going to pour into the second paragraph and see the pattern. What he does for you personally, he does for all those who believe in him. Right? And then he brings us together in what he calls the church. Right? The church is Jesus's idea. And when it's right, the Bible talks a lot about the bride of Christ, the body of Christ, the, the, um, the, um, we are being built into a spiritual house, right? So all of these kinds of images are true about the family of God. All right. Um, what does this mean? I believe that I. Let's start over. Sorry. We're going to read the Luther's meaning of the third article of the creed. I'll read the first question, then you guys come in. Does that make sense? That was all my fault and I'm sorry. What does this mean? "I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to him. But the Holy Spirit has called me by the gospel, enlightened me with his gifts, sanctified and kept me in the true faith. In the same way he calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith. In this Christian church, he daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers. On the last day, he will raise me and all the dead and give eternal life to me and all believers in Christ." This is most certainly true. This is most certainly true. What? Were you able to read with me?
Yeah, but I was like, it means the same thing. So we don't know if we're in part one, part two, or I don't know if there's part three.
Good grief. Um, if they split those. Good grief. Sorry. We need to correct this mistake that I made. So Jesus, by the power of the Holy Spirit, you get connected to Jesus individually by his work. And when you believe in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, that's work of the Holy Spirit. Not only does he do that for you, but everyone who comes from unbelief to faith, the Holy Spirit does that for them too. It is his intent and his work that he would connect every single one of us who believe in him to Jesus Christ. The Holy Spirit, I think I finished last time by saying the Holy Spirit is sometimes called the team player of the Trinity. Um, because most often, especially in the Lutheran church, most often he is there to connect you to the star. He's there to connect you to the Christ. And through the Christ to get connected to the Father again. So that you would be counseled and you would be comforted and you would be strengthened for the journey, for being out there and all alone, to be in together in the family of God and all of you together having faith in the Christ, where he has bought your way directly back to the Father's heart and the, the Father's arms. So that the mission, so that the rescue mission would take place of getting back to paradise regained. Paradise lost in the garden, paradise regained when he gets us home. Now by faith, then by sight. So the Holy Spirit, the third person of the Trinity, he calls and he calls me out of darkness into his marvelous light. He calls. He stands at the door and knocks. Right? He calls. He calls on me to, uh, to come from unbelief to faith in the Christ. He calls. He gathers me and he gathers me together with you. It is he who has done this great work. Um, he gathers, uh, he calls, he enlightens. He enlightens. Um, one of the things that's just imperative to remember is that, uh, is that Jesus Christ is the light of the world. The light that no darkness, no darkness can overcome. Does it feel like the world is pretty dark today? Right? We have the word of the Lord that makes us realize that no matter what Satan's up to, Almighty God will see us through. Right? John 1633 is one of my favorite passages in all of the Bible and it says what? Do you know? In this world, you will have what? Trouble. Trouble, right? In me, you will have what? Peace. Right? In me, you will have peace. In the world, you will have trouble, but take heart, for I have overcome the world. Right? I have overcome the world. And so, um, in the same way, he calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies. Remember, we talked about what that is? What, what did we say that is? He sanctifies me. He makes us holy. And, and there's a, there's a once and for all kind of aspect of that, that he says, I call you my name and you're mine. And I connect you. But then there's also a process aspect of that, that, uh, that, uh, that's why we, that's why it's right that we use the word better life in our values instead of best life. Because I'm a work in progress. How many of you have figured that out about me? I am a work in progress. He's not done with me. He's not done with me yet because I'm not home. I'm still here. I'm still a work in progress. Right? Theology, according to the great Lutheran theologian, Stephen, no. What's the guy's name on Family Feud? Steve Harvey. There you go. Great Lutheran theologian. Exactly. Um, I, I, uh, I'm still a work in progress and God's not done with me yet. Right? In a stand-up comedy routine, he said that time and time again in his routine. Much of the rest of the comedy routine probably should not be listened to because the language is not good. But, uh, I thought that was funny. Apparently funnier than you did. So, um, in this, in this journey together, this idea of sanctification is that he makes me one with Christ in a moment when I come from unbelief to faith. Maybe for most of you, that happened in the waters of your baptism. But for some in the room, it may have happened in a moment, in an experience, in a powerful experience where the Holy Spirit showed up and brought you from unbelief to faith. And then a baptism followed. Um, and so, and so he works in many and various ways to connect us to him. Um, we then, we then know and understand that, that, that justification and that initiation of faith um, in each and every one of us. Then the process of being equipped for one season to another of your life. Because if you think, I said something this morning in the, in the sermon that I hadn't planned on saying. And it was rather confrontational, but you all just let it go by. So I'm going to try it again. No, I'm not. No, I'm not. You'll have to come to church again. So in this idea that he calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies, this idea of living a better life and being equipped for the life that is in front of us today, if you just stop and say, that's good enough, tomorrow's coming. Tomorrow's coming. And, and for us as a church, for every new season that comes at us, there is both at the same time comfort and assurance that he is mine and I am his. But also there is this urgency to continue to be lifelong learners and grow and be equipped for what's going to come at the church next. And to stand up and be the church in the world in that day. Loving, forgiving, being patient, being understanding, having wisdom to apply to people's lives when they need the wisdom of the Lord through the people of God. I said in the, I'll get to it. I said, I said in the, in the sermon that, uh, I, I used to say to people all the time that, uh, that the church is never in as much danger as it is when it's fat, happy, and content. We're coming to a time, it feels like in the culture, the country, the world, where it's going to be time for the church to stand up again on its feet and be the church in the world in this day. A time of persecution, a time that it's going to be necessary for the people of God to stand in the gap of what the world throws at it. And my concern is that we've been, one of the great, one of the great instruments of the evil one is comfort. The church is never in as much danger as it is when it's comfortable. Because the people sit down and, and they get snarky. And they want things the way they want it. And they get their mind off of the battle that is before us, onto things that just don't matter. And that becomes the thing they think about instead of the army and the war that is before us. And, and, and the, and the fear and concern on my part is that when it comes at the people of God at Trinity, will we be in good enough shape to stand back up again and put on the armor? Or have you been too comfortable for too long? Thoughts? Questions? Yes, Jonathan? Who turns on each other?
Well, you reference to the church. I mean, this is true of any organization. It's a fact. Whether you're too comfortable or you think that, uh, you need to be seeing the faults of those who are closest. You turn on each other and unfortunately, if the church thinks that, that has happened a lot over time.
Yes. Yes. Awesome. There is a devotion that I used to use back when we printed stuff on pages. Uh, and it made the claim, I don't, I don't know how true this claim is. It made the claim that most civilizations in the history of mankind have lasted between 200 and 225 years. And that in that period of time, um, a very large percentage of them imploded. They weren't attacked from the outside. Right? So however true that is, I went all that way in order to get to this idea of implosion, right? Turning on one another, implosion, instead of, uh, being attacked from the outside. And, and the erosion of culture, the erosion of absolute truth, the erosion of God and his place in the culture and the country at the heart of all those things. And so in the midst of all of that, he calls his church, he calls his church to be one, first of all. He calls his church to be one in Christ and he calls and inspires his church then, uh, to the mission that is before us. And the mission before us is not to prove yourself right. The mission before us is to love the way that he loved in the world, in the day in which we live. Um, and so, and so it's the Holy Spirit's job then to sanctify, to build up through the word, the people of God for the sake of the mission that is before us in every generation. And there's no retiring from the army because you're old. Yeah, say that again so she can hear it. Oh, there you go. So, um, say it again so I can hear it, apparently. So this idea of the Holy Spirit's work being to sanctify us, make us lifelong learners for the sake of the season that is behind us, at us now, and out in front of us, is something that is imperative for every generation of the church, for every generation of the church. Um, so he says, "In the same way he calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith." We've talked a lot here together about the different definitions of the word church. Right? Church. You can talk about each one of those definitions of the word church. The building, the people in the steeple, the, uh, the, the church, Trinity, Lutheran church, the Lutheran church, Missouri Senate, and none of that is sinful. None of that is wrong. But so far, I haven't said anything about the one that gets you to heaven. Right? Within each one of those things, uh, those systems, those, those gathered together people are true believers in Jesus. Right? And there are some in each one of those places that may not be. But God calls us to love them all and at the end, he'll work it out. He doesn't call you to be judge, or me, to be judge. He calls us to love one another and at the end, he'll work it all out. See the parable of the wheat and the chaff. Right? So, um, he calls and gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies the entire Christian church. And at the heart of that stands people who are gathered. The idea is not of God, that you can be a child of the King and not be part of the visible body. It is not of God. The idea that you can be an individual Christian, I believe in Jesus, I just don't believe in the church. I'm sorry, but the church is Jesus's idea. And he gives us no plan B. No plan B. So the bride of Christ, the sum total of all those who believe, gather together invisible congregations in order to impact all those who do not yet and to hold on and hold up all those who are bent low um, and to love one another between now and the day that he gets us home. The church is Jesus's idea. He calls it his bride. His bride. He calls it, uh, he gives us, through Paul, he gives us the picture of the spiritual house and the, and the building of God. Um, and in that Christian church, now here I'm talking about all those who believe in Jesus Christ, gather together. Um, in that Christian church, he does some things. In the same way, he calls, gathers, enlightens, and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth. And what's he do? Keeps it. Keeps it connected to Christ. Keeps it connected to Christ. He's not keeping it for the sake of its programs. He keeps it connected to Christ. Keeps it with Jesus Christ in this one true faith. What do you think of when you hear the word one true faith? One true faith. What comes to mind? Nothing? Yes, Dottie?
Um, I, I couldn't. In first, it's like, the one thing that has to have Jesus, has to have. Well, actually, you could check today, uh, you know, the little girl that is dead. There's five weeks, you know, in the Bible. And I thought, oh, you know, this is quite the land sort of, you know, I mean, that's what went through my head. But then I thought about that and I thought, that's the way I find Jesus too. I don't have many people talking to me about Jesus. But I do have a bit of a life.
Yes. Yes.
And so there is, that's where I think that's where the faith comes from. And we wouldn't know about.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, I, that was a, a little bit of a holy moment in the children's message this morning. Uh, with, with Brian Bowes's daughter being the only one that came up and me asking her questions in front of God and everybody. Um, she did great. She did great. Um, so the first thing that he does is that he keeps it. Holy Spirit's work to keep you in the one true faith and to keep you connected to the body of Christ. Right? Holy Spirit work. Right? Now he uses tools in order to get his work done. He uses people. He uses processes. He uses prayers. He uses all kinds of things. He also, he also uses, uh, prodigals. He also goes ahead and lets you have the desires of your heart so that you can see where that ends you up. So that then hopefully you will be brought home again. Um, and the, and the idea of, uh, turning hard head and hard, hard life into life of, and a heart of flesh, uh, that can see him again is Holy Spirit work as well. Because it says, "In this Christian church, he daily, daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers." Daily. Daily. Uh, open your Bibles if you would to Acts chapter two. Acts chapter two. Um, uh, uh, there, there are some passages, there are some passages in the Bible that, uh, that all of our theology are hung upon because there's such seminal passages. For example, uh, the Pharisees are trying to trap Jesus and they ask him, which is the greatest of the commandments? Well, you know that what comes out of his mouth next is going to be an epic thing for us to hang on to. Right? So in this passage, Pentecost has just taken place and the Holy Spirit comes and they go from 3,000, or they go from 120 people to 3,120 people in one day. And Acts 2:42 through 47 is what they were devoted to. But look at verse, look at verse 47. Somebody read verse 47 for me. Acts 2. Am I wrong? Acts 2:47. "And the Lord added to their number daily." "And the Lord added to their number daily those who were being saved." Daily. Isn't that amazing? Daily. Those who were being saved. And, and this idea, this idea of that the Holy Spirit works in the lives of God's people daily. Daily. It's something that the church needs to pray for. Daily. Daily. I'd invite you all to come with me on Wednesday nights and pray this prayer. To, to pray this prayer that, uh, that all of those that we love most and best, um, that daily the Holy Spirit would tyrannize them. I love this word. That the Holy Spirit would tyrannize them and that he would call them, call them to fan into fame the gift of faith that they have in their hearts. Uh, call them from, from, uh, being out there, being prodigalized or being lost to coming home again. There's this, there's this statement that's going on now among people like George Barna. You ever heard that name? George Barna. It's a, it's a Christian survey company and a very highly trusted survey company. And, and George is identifying for us that, uh, there is a, there is a mass migration of youth and young adults back to the church. Uh, back to the church. And our prayer has got to be that we are ready to receive them and to bend our comfort for the sake of welcoming them in and that we, uh, develop in such a way that the next generation is with us. And so this idea that the Holy Spirit daily would call, gather, enlighten, and sanctify us and those who are on the outside looking in, is just huge. It's a huge prayer for a congregation that wants to turn around. Right? For a congregation that wants to turn around its decline in numbers of attendance. For a congregation that wants to turn around in, in its decline in, in enrollment and engagement and, and its giving. Until, until the Lord has your heart, you're never going to be a cheerful giver. Um, and so my hope is that he daily tyrannizes you too. Praise God. Um, and, and, and that he opens you up. The, the Holy Spirit opens you up to this life that is truly life. So, um, in this Christian church, he daily and richly. Why does he say, I, I got, I, I got the powerful impact of the word daily? What is, what is the impact in the phrase, "He daily and richly forgives my sins and the sins of all believers"? Why does he say richly? Generously? Have you ever? Have you ever, have you ever, uh, read the catechism? Uh, have you ever read the catechism? Uh, let's see if we can find it. Um, it's the Lord's Prayer. It's the petition on daily bread. Can you go hunt and find that one? The petition on daily bread. It is the fourth petition. In my catechism, it's page one eighty-nine. In yours, all of yours, apparently, it's something else. What? One eighty-four in the old blue one. Or no, the not quite as old as Jonathan's blue one. Um, and, uh, I feel like yelling bingo. I don't know. Huh? Two fifty-eight. We have a winner. Two, two fifty-eight. Huh? Oh, praise God. Well, good. All right. So notice, notice that my question to you is in this Christian church, he daily and richly, richly forgives my sins and the sins of all believers. Right? Notice in this application of this idea, how he blesses you every day. Every day with everything you need for this body and life. So in the fourth petition, give us this day our daily bread. Give us today our daily bread. What does this mean? God certainly gives daily bread to everyone without our prayers, even to all evil people. But we pray in this petition that God would lead us to realize this and to receive our daily bread with Thanksgiving. What is meant by daily bread? Daily bread includes everything that has to do with the support and the needs of the body, such as food, drink, clothing, shoes, house, home, land, animals, money, goods, a devout husband or wife, devout children, devout workers, devout and faithful rulers, good government, good weather, peace, health, self-control, good reputation, good friends, faithful neighbors and the like. Richly, right? Richly. And you're Lutheran. And so it's hard to stretch yourself out to how blessed he wants to make you. Because it feels a little bit too full and ostentatious. Cause you're Lutheran or you're German. Or you're, or you're German Lutheran or you're, right? Um, so, um, this idea that he wants to richly bless you. He wants to richly bless you, not just with the basics of what I need, food, clothing, shelter. Notice how he wants to pour grace and blessing out upon you. So that that grace and blessing would be, would be, uh, you would be blessed to receive it and you would be blessed to use it for his kingdom and for his glory. And you would steward it in the generosity of the comes from knowing that it all belongs to him. Right? So this, this idea of daily bread is informative for the text that we're on. Right? Notice how he wants to, he wants to bless you lavishly. Lavishly, right? So now let's go back and read this sentence again. In this Christian church, he daily and richly, richly. He daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers. Right? Why does the church exist? Why does the church exist? Unify us? What is, what is the church supposed to be doing? Huh? Spreading God's word. Okay? What else? So, so let me just give you what I think. Is that okay? It starts at the heart of the matter. Right? Um, when you, when you think theologically, you wanna start at the heart and work your way out. At the heart of a matter. The church exists at the heart of the matter. Because Jesus has lived and died and risen again. And he has bought you from unbelief to faith by the power of the Holy Spirit. And then he puts you together. He gathers. He gathers people who are now going to heaven instead of going to hell. He gathers us. And in that Christian church, then he tells us to be doing some stuff. Everybody, all y'all, keep your eyes on me. That's number one. Keep your eyes on me. Everybody, all, everybody, all eyes on Christ. Don't forsake your first love. All eyes on Christ. And then, and then after we are at this point where we love the Lord our God with all our heart, soul and mind, then he says to us now, love your neighbor. But that text to Matthew twenty-two, thirty-seven to thirty-nine? That text says, love your neighbor as yourself. Look, I, um, I, I think, so for example, what does joy stand for? Not here, but normally. Sorry. Jesus, others, yourself. Jesus, others, you. Jesus, others, yourself. Right? Um, and, and, uh, what's it stand for here? Just older youth. That's great. I love that. Just older youth. In other words, if you're not older, you're not welcome. Just older youth. I love that. That's great. Um, so, uh, but, uh, and it's only, it's not for the mature either. Just older youth. Whereas, uh, you, you might get old, but that doesn't mean you have to be mature. Right? That's who we want in our group. Yes, I love that. That's awesome. That's awesome. So, um, so Jesus, others and you. So, uh, love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul and mind. Love your neighbor. I, I don't, I don't believe any of us will truly love our neighbor until we have this first relationship figured out. That you are number one, loved by him. So that he can then define and inspire and redefine who you are in his eyes and even more importantly, in your eyes. Because until he transforms the way you love you, the way you look at you, until he transforms that, you're not gonna love anybody else in a healthy way. You're just gonna unload all your stuff on them. And so this idea of Jesus, others and you, I don't know what the word spells. It's, it feels like it's a little bit more Chinese, but it's Jesus, you, and then others. What's that spell? Um, uh, Jesus, love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul and mind. Love your neighbor as yourself, as yourself. And so being able to, uh, have the Holy Spirit have free reign in your life, to redefine, connect you to Christ so that he can face to face with you by counsel of the Holy Spirit, redefine who you say you are. And, and be able to love yourself the way he loves you. So that then you can let yourself up. And you can forgive yourself. And you can, you, uh, you can gain victory over the, you can gain victory over the strongholds of your life. So that then, so that then you can, uh, so that then hard head, hard heart and hard head can be worked on and, and melted to the point where you can then risk to love again, or maybe the first time, somebody else. Uh, that's Holy Spirit work. That's Holy Spirit work for all of us. As he counsels, as he comforts, as he enlightens us and brings us out of the darkness of a, of a self-hatred, uh, that many people carry around or a, or a, or a guilt-driven, guilt motivated faith. Um, and, um, thoughts, questions? Does this make sense to you people? Or am I just all by myself in the room? You guys, you guys with me? So this idea for us of the work of the Holy Spirit, um, is that he daily and he richly forgives all my sins. Now wait a minute. The Holy Spirit forgives my sins? Uh, really? How does, how is that true? Huh? He's part of the Trinity. Could you please say more, Raji? I never thought I'd ever say that to you, but you. Dear sister in Christ, you are exactly right, but unpack that a little bit. Yeah. Right, that was not helpful at all. Um, so, so the Holy Spirit. So think about this. Where we're gonna go next is into these things called means of grace. Right? Means of grace. Look, uh, being washed with water doesn't do anything unless you're dirty. Eating a little wafer and a little thimble full of, of wine. We need better wine, by the way. Um, doesn't do anything for you. Did I just lose my call? Um, it's been nice. Uh, so, I, it doesn't do anything for you unless the Holy Spirit shows up. Right? The Holy Spirit shows up and brings the word of God to bear and opens you up to the idea that those places are a means whereby Almighty God in Christ connects you to what he did on the cross over two thousand years ago by his perfect life, his suffering and death and his resurrection. How does God's love for the whole world? Right? John three sixteen. How does God's love for the whole world travel? And not just be loved for the whole world, but one-on-one. Right? For Teresa. Where were you baptized? Saint Paul's? Saint Peter and Paul. Um, awesome. Now, never mind, there's a whole thing about arguing with one another, but, uh, I, I almost didn't say it. Um, so at a very specific place, God's love for the whole world traveled from the cross and the empty tomb up into whatever year it was, whatever year it was. And in that very specific place, and applied itself as an infant, and, and applied itself to that infant's life, one-on-one. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever, that whoever, God's love for the world becomes one-on-one. Love for the world becomes whoever. The Holy Spirit's work is to connect us to what Jesus did on the, by his perfect life and his suffering, death and resurrection over two thousand years ago on the other side of the world. So you gotta keep this straight. One of the, one of the most important things to keep straight in the Lutheran theology of the word of God is that baptism does not save you. The, the Lord's supper does not save you until you realize that these are means of him connecting you to what Jesus did on the cross. So there's one place that we look. There's one place. Good Friday. Easter Sunday. Sorry, that's two, but one significant moment. And then baptism by the work of the Holy Spirit becomes a life-giving water. Lord's supper becomes a life-giving meal for the kids. Because he connects you to what Jesus did on the cross. So when you think, when you think about the truth that baptism now saves us, what we're really saying is that baptism is the means in this moment, baptism is a means whereby he connected me to what Jesus did. Right? So that then we say, then we say baptism now saves us. The Lord's supper for the redeemed feeds the kids and connects us again to the forgiveness that he bought for us. But whenever you examine yourself, do I, do I, man, I'm preaching three, look at this. We could just go on and not go to the baptism and the Lord's supper. Um, I'm sorry. Uh, but when you, the Holy Spirit then opens you up to examine yourself for the sake of the forgiveness of sins. And what he's doing is that he's saying to you, examine yourself and see that, uh, see that he locates himself here for you. Examine yourself and see that you are a sinner and you need what he gives you here. Examine yourself and see your need for your love. So that then you can believe that the one who lived and died, that the one who came the first time and will come again, this one locates and comes to you now to connect you again to what he did all the way back there. It is a means of grace. Have I made myself clear? It is, it is, uh, both of these things are a means of grace. And the Holy Spirit's work is to open you up to that truth. Right? So that that, uh, forgiveness can be yours. Now, at the heart of this, at the heart of this stands, uh, he daily and richly forgives all my sins. He daily and richly forgives all my sins. Have you sinned? Raise your hand if you have sinned. In thought? Raise your hand if you have sinned in thought? Raise your hand if you have sinned by what you've said? Raise your hand if you have sinned by what you did? Raise your hand if you have sinned by what you didn't do that you should have? Wow. Um, there's some energy around that one. Uh, uh, raise your hand if you have sinned, uh, because you haven't been thinking what you should be thinking. Man, he is not letting us up. Even, even if you, even if you could keep your hand down in all of those things, just know that the word of God says to you, as it says in Psalm one thirty-nine, I was sinful from the time my mother conceived me. The reason that I sin in thought, word and deed is because I am a sinner. And sinners sin. It's what we do. Um, and so, and so Almighty God says to us, if you wanna get right with me, if you wanna be right with me, if you want me to let you into my heaven, if you want me to be on your side in this life, if you want that to take place and you wanna try to get that by your own work, then hear my, because I'm judge, he says, hear my judgment. Be perfect. Be perfect. As I, the Lord your God, am perfect. So what he wants to do is that he wants to show you your sin and show you your need for your Savior. Here too, right? Remember the, the ten commandments? He wants to show you that. And it's Holy Spirit work that he would open you up to the idea that you are a sinner. Here's the other thing. Here's the other thing that people who have experienced grace for a long time are in danger of. People who are in grace for a long time have a tendency to not be horrified by their sin. A little bit comfortable because you know grace is there. So when you convicted because of your sin, the Holy Spirit would then convict you to be horrified by your sin because you know that it was that sin that nailed the Christ to the cross. Because if, if it doesn't happen where he shakes you a little bit, shakes, shakes you up a little bit and, and, and brings you out of your comfort and your lethargy and your comfortability in grace, then pretty soon, Good Friday doesn't mean what it should mean. It just becomes another church holiday. But what he wants to do is horrify you by your thoughts, your words, your deeds, what you've done, what you haven't done. Realizing the price that it took to pay for what you've been up to. So that then repentance and faith would be new for you again, new for you. And then you would experience grace again in a powerful way. So that he can then on a daily basis mean what he's meant to mean for you. And all of that is Holy Spirit work. All of it is Holy Spirit work. Thoughts, questions? So then, after that, being horrified and experiencing God's grace, the Holy Spirit can then come to you and say, he loves you. You live in this loving relationship with him and there needs to be no fear because he's got you. But then that no fear can come anew to you because you've been shaken and now comforted again in the ongoing love of him who bled and died for you. Finally, on the last day. When is that? On the last day. When is that? Well, on that day, what's going to happen? On that day, he will raise me and all the dead. So according to the word of God and according to Luther, those who die, um, those who die in the Lord are in this thing called the sleep of death. And they are at rest in the Sabbath rest where, uh, time is going by and they don't experience it and they are with the Lord. And, um, and then he comes again on the day, whatever day that is. Christ himself doesn't even know what day that's going to be. But the Father will say to Jesus, go get them. Sorry, it'd be more eloquent than that. Uh, go get them. The ones you bought and paid for, go get them. Bring them home. Right? And the dead in Christ will be raised. And then all of us who are alive when he comes will be caught up in the air and we will be taken home to be forever with the Lord. Um, on the last day, on that day, whatever day it is. And the word of God says to us that that day's going to come like a thief in the night. But on that day, he says to us, he says to us that every generation is meant to live as if it's going to happen in your day. Every generation. When you get to a little bit, part of your life and you look back on life and you see what's going on in your generation, you look at what's happening in that generation and you see the, the fulfillment of prophecy all over the place. And you think to yourself, oh, Lord, he's coming again. And you think to yourself, right? You think to yourself, he's got to build up in his church urgency. He's got to build up in his church urgency because he's coming again while we're alive and we got to get this right and get this right now and save as many as we can while he's, while he, while we wait for him to come again, but he's coming again. Can you feel it? Can you feel it? Can you feel it? A little bit darker? Says in the last days, "The love of most will grow cold." Wars and rumors of wars. Families will turn against one another. And so every generation is meant to live with a sense of urgency that he's coming again. So that the church will not sit down and get comfortable. It will be about the Father's business and be inspired by the Holy Spirit to be, uh, the love of Christ in the world so that daily and richly, people will be added to our number daily, those who are being saved. All that work of the Holy Spirit, connecting us to the Christ, connecting us to the Father, connecting us to one another so that we would love one another as he has loved us. Let's pray. Father, I thank you. I thank you for being with us. I thank you, uh, that you have sent your son, Jesus. I thank you that you have come. Holy Spirit, I thank you that you have opened us up, called, gathered, enlightened and sanctified us to these truths. And we stake our lives on the Christ because of your counsel. Dear Lord, build your church, strengthen us and equip us for the days before us. In your name we pray. Amen.